All right, good evening. It is six o'clock on February 14, 2023. This meeting of the Hingham Select Board is called to order. I want to know for the record that this meeting is being offered remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2022 and all other applicable laws temporarily amending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 38, Section 20F, so that the Chair may inform all other participants of said recording. If anybody is recording the meeting, please notify me at this time. Not seeing any. I want to know for the record that participate in tonight's meeting are myself, William Ramsey, Chair, Board Member Liz Klein, and Board Member Joe Fisher. Next item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. For those willing, please stand.
Flag of our nation? Aye, pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next item on the agenda is Executive Session under Mass. General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the DPW Teamsters Local 25. Want to note that, actually, before we do that, approval of minutes is the next one before we go to Executive Session. So let's take up the minutes before we reconvene over recess to Executive Session. So we have three sets of meeting minutes up for the vote tonight. Liz, you ready to proceed?
I am.
Chair, ready to proceed?
I am.
All right, I'll take a motion.
I move to approve the minutes dated January 31, 2023.
Second.
All of them favor Joe?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
And I'm an ayes, while the motion carries. I'll take a second motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes dated February 7, 2023.
Second.
All of them favor Liz?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
And I'm an ayes, while the motion carries. Take a third motion?
I move to approve the minutes dated February 9, 2023.
Second.
All of them favor Joe?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
And I'm an ayes, while the motion carries. All right, next item on the agenda again is Executive Session under Mass. General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the DPW Teamsters Local 25. Want to note for the record that the Board will enter Executive Session under Mass. General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the DPW Teamsters Local 25, because discussion in an open session may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the town. The Board will reconvene in open session by roll call vote. Joe?
Bill, I will take your statement as a motion. I will second that motion.
Great. All of them favor Joe?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
And I'm an ayes, while the motion carries. All right, we will reconvene in a little bit. Thanks, everybody. All right, this meeting of the Hingham Select Board is called back into open session. Our parties previously present are again present. Next item on the agenda is a potential vote to sign the memorandum of agreement with the DPW Teamsters Local 25. We have with us Jack Manning from the Personnel Board. Jack, if you want to come up and join us?
Yeah, just two. Yeah. Internet session going. Thanks very much for inviting me in.
Are you going to, are you on that? Can you, oh, great, sorry about that. Heidi, can you, can you stop sharing your screen? I think that's where it's coming from.
I don't want to share it.
Okay. There we go. Excellent. All right, looking good. All right. Again, we have Jack Manning with us from the Personnel Board to take up Agenda Item Five.
Recording in progress.
Jack, thanks for joining us tonight. If you don't mind, just give us an overview of the collective bargaining agreement and the negotiations, anything else you want to share that might be helpful to us in making a vote on this item.
I'd be happy to, Bill. Thank you. Again, thank you for inviting us. The team in this particular case was myself and Karen Johnson. Tom, of course, sat in on all of our meetings. Randy Sylvester, who's superintendent for the town, also sat in on all the meetings. So it was, it was a team effort, for sure, right from the start. We had a number of, of issues that we wanted to get on the table, and we wanted the rank and file to, to address in our negotiations. And the rank and file, when they came in, they came in with a number of asks that they thought were critical to what they wanted us to hear and respond to. There were about 21 asks that they had when they first came in to meet with us. Many of them had financial ramifications, so we took a long time studying them. These conversations actually started in October of 2021, so the negotiations have been going on for a long time. And they were passionate, they were robust conversations, a lot of things that were on the table that were important to the town and important to us. And we kept on emphasizing that what we wanted to make sure that we did was to take care of the people in the rank and file. These people work for the town, and if you look at the longevity that these folks have, some of them have worked for the town for 15, 20, 25, 30 years in some cases. So people that have literally committed their lives to working for, for the town and doing a good job, and, you know, when it snows, nobody wonders where the trucks are going to be. They're out there in front of your house, they're plowing. So a lot of respect that we had as a bargaining team, sitting across from these people who work very, very hard to do a great job for the town. So we took it very seriously, as they did. We had a number of different negotiations, meetings, and we tried to get to a point where we could come to some kind of a common understanding. What we ended up with was, a critical issue for them was to try to get to a point where, when we compare ourselves to the other towns, and we do in any of our negotiations with collective bargaining, we have 19 other towns that we compare ourselves to. And we wanted to make sure that we were at least at the midpoint or better than the midpoint. And that's been a town philosophy for the last 25 years, certainly well beyond the number of years that I've been sitting on the Board. And in the case of the DPW rank and file, we were below that. So when we see that happening, we recommend that an equity adjustment be considered. In this particular case, it was 3.89%. We were able to negotiate and use that as a tool in our negotiations, so we got the 3.89. And again, to make sure that we were at least at midpoint amongst the other towns that we compare ourselves to. And then in terms of COLA adjustments, COLA adjustments, excuse me, we got 3% for three years. And this contract had been held off in negotiations for a considerable amount of time. So what we did in this case was, we agreed to a one-year contract and then a three-year contract. So in effect, four years, but we can, we're limited to a three-year contract. So we got it to work that way. So we got the COLA adjustment to be 3, 3, and 3. We got the equity adjustment to be 3.89. We thought it was in the best interests of the town. Only other monetary requests that the, the rank and file had made of us, we got those off the table. So we were dealing with simply with that and a few other issues. We had some asks of the rank and file regarding vacation carryover, comp time carryover, and notice of vacation time. The rank and file agreed to all of those asks, so we felt we were in a really good position to do the right thing, do something that was fair for the town and fair for the rank and file, and that's the agreement that we put in front of you today.
Well, Jack, I just want to publicly thank you and Karen for, you know, your hard work on this.
Thank you.
On this issue. And I agree with you, you know, the, the DPW does so much work for the town and works so hard to, whether it's a snowstorm, or at the transfer station, or work around town. And, you know, we're very appreciative of the hard work that all of our DPW does. And I thought you and Karen did a great job on the same. Thrilled that it's a four-year.
Thank you.
It's a four-year agreement, which is great, but I reviewed the collective bargaining agreement in pretty good detail, so I don't have any specific questions about it, but just wanted to say thank you.
Appreciate that very much. Thank you.
Let me turn it over to Liz, see if you have any questions or comments.
Great, thanks, Bill. Thank you, Jack, and thank you to Karen. I know you both worked very hard on this. From my perspective, I think any collective bargaining agreement, we want to be fair and equitable. We want it to demonstrate that we value the employees, the work they do, the services they provide. But I do like what you were explaining, that this also follows our policy of making equity adjustments to raise our employees right above that midpoint relative to the 19 benchmark towns. I think it's important to be consistent about that and set expectations. So we've done that, plus the 3% cost of living adjustment, which we've done for our other employees as well. So I think that is fair. I know there were details about the vacation notification and carryover, which is valuable for us from a management perspective and, and streamlining that, so I was glad to see that. So I've also reviewed, I know we've spoken offline, I've spoken with Karen as well, so I don't have any other questions. I'm comfortable with this. I think it is, is fair and, and represents how we value the DPW.
Thank you.
So thank you.
Thank you. Joe, any questions or comments?
No, I think you and Liz said it all. I've also reviewed the agreement. And, you know, I think my experience and our collective experience is that the DPW crew goes to bat for the town. Randy went to bat for his crew in this, and I think this is, this is a good agreement and we should proceed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do any members of the public have any questions or comments on this agenda item? If you're on Zoom and you want to have any questions or comments, you can just raise your hand physically or virtually, and I'll do my best to identify everybody. We have a lot of people on Zoom tonight. Okay, seeing none. Joe and Liz, Joe, are you ready to prepare to vote on this?
I am.
Liz, you ready to prepare?
I am.
Okay, with that, I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to sign the memorandum of agreement with the DPW Teamsters Local 25 for contracts effective July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2022, and July 1, 2022 through June 30, 2025.
Second.
All of them favor Liz?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
And I'm an ayes, while the motion carries unanimously. Jack, thanks very much for your work.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
Thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda is 2023 Annual Town Meeting Warren Article Discussions. We're going to start this evening with Article T, which is our naming bylaw. We do have the Chair of the Naming Bylaw Committee, Phil Ebenson, on Zoom tonight. Phil, good evening. I also note we have Victor Bolterra in the audience. Victor, do you want to come up and join us? You're welcome. Phil, good evening.
Good evening, and thanks very much for meeting with us again. I will try to summarize the work we've done since our last meeting, and Victor may have some things to add to that, but I can say we represent us in person. So we were asked by Town Council to consider several amendments to the language in the proposed bylaw, and we voted on the following changes. First, we agreed with Town Council's advice to remove a clause restricting us to recognizing only local and national or global significance events and names, on the thinking that this would widen the aperture and make the opportunity to have more private investments available to the town. Second, we agreed with what we understood again was Town Council's advice to remove a section on commercial signs on the idea that that was duplicating other bylaws and was not necessary. And thirdly, we agreed to recommend the changes around the definition of widely advertised that we're trying to grapple with here. The concept is that broadly, you know, many of these naming events can be, you know, they can be very inspirational to town citizens, but they can also be very upsetting if citizens feel that they're not engaged. So we're trying to find a way to express the overall notion that we want an increased level of transparency and involvement for the community. The language that was proposed, I'd be glad to kind of go through the details with you, but the big picture thinking is, you may recall that in the bylaw, there's a recommendation that the Select Board adopt a policy, which is unadopted by other boards and committees that have relevant actions here. And that, and so our thinking is this idea of widely advertised may be better defined as a policy statement rather than in the bylaw. And that's what we're trying to do in the, in the language which we sent back to Town Council and, and Town Manager Tom Mayo. So maybe I'll stop and see. Victor, is there anything you'd like to add?
No, Phil, I think you, you covered it. The, the language that we added to the policy portion of, connected with widely advertised, is meant to emphasize that the policy can have, go beyond the minimum, in fact, it should go beyond the minimum. So that was one difference from what the Town Council's language was.
Yeah. And, you know, and we are, if and when you encourage us to continue along this course, we, our next job, or one of our next jobs, is to come back to you with a draft policy statement for your consideration and discussion. I don't believe this needs to be finalized, you know, before town meeting, but we do want to present you with a recommended policy statement, so expect to think about it. It might help to prepare for a more fulsome discussion at town meeting as required.
Phil, thank you. Anything else to add, Victor?
No, I'm sorry.
Well, Phil, Victor, your entire committee, I know that we've had this, we've been discussing this for, over the course of the last several months, and we've had you in for a couple of meetings, and I know that this was not an easy ask of you and your committee. Phil, this was very complicated, and I think we're at a great place, got to a great place. I know there's a lot of input from the public. You had a wonderful committee working with you, Phil, and just thank you for getting us here and, and moving this forward. Very much appreciate all your hard work. Joe, any, any comments or questions?
No, I mean, I think you were walking, the committee was walking an interesting tightrope. On one, one hand, you want to make sure that there's flexibility. On the other hand, you're trying to establish rules. And I think you struck the right balance here, and you've, I think, expanded what the current bylaw provides and given us more flexibility, but there are constraints. So I think your committee is, is to be commended, so thank you.
Liz, any questions or comments?
Yes, thank you for all the hard work. No questions, I have reviewed it in detail, and I, I agree with the changes since the last time we met. I did go back today and look at the Sustainable Budget Task Force report, and this was one of the recommendations that was called out. And, and some of the language that we included last year, which I think is still relevant, is that updating Hingham's naming bylaw to increase the town's ability to attract private funds and donations to support capital projects could serve as an important component of the town's strategy to help defray the tax impact of debt exclusions on residents and businesses. We estimated the revenue potential of this idea to be medium-high. So it is significant, and I think it is a strategic component to support future large capital projects. So thank you. I do think it's important, and I, I'm comfortable with the language.
Any members of the public have any question or comments on this proposed warrant article? All right, seeing none. Are you ready to vote?
I am.
Liz, ready to vote tonight?
Yes.
All right, with that, I'll take a motion.
I move to recommend favorable action on Article T.
Second.
All of them favor Joe?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
And I'm an ayes, while the motion carries unanimously. Phil, thanks very much. Victor, thank you.
Thank you, Victor. Thank you, Phil.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. We'll be back to sitting, I'm sure, later in this conference.
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is Article U, which is a potential warrant article on plastic bottle ban bylaw related to, U is going to be related to the commercial sale or distribution. So we have Maria Zaid with us today. Maria, how are you? Come on up and join us. Great, come on up.
Thank you for having me.
Good seeing you again.
Nice to see you. So, yeah, if we could just go, so I'm here as the Chair of Hingham, and I, the proposed bylaw, can you read slide three? Right there. So the proposed set of bylaws today would limit the sale of non-flavored, non-carminated water in single-serve plastic containers. So if you look at the graphic on the left, anything that is under a gallon and that is plain water would be restricted under this bylaw, and anything on the right would still be allowed. So if you have anything over a gallon or anything that is not water, that would not fall under this bylaw. It would prohibit town entities such as the Pope Schools and the Rec Department from purchasing these products and distributing them. And the fines for violations would be the same as with the plastic bag ban. So a first violation would get a written warning, second violation would get $100 fine, third violation 200, fourth violation, subsequent violations 300. The bylaw would require, would rely on complaint-based enforcement, meaning somebody has, a citizen in town would have to call into the enforcing agency, and then the business in question would get either a phone call or a visit asking them to go into compliance. Can we go to the next slide? So with this bylaw, Hingham would be joining 24 communities that have already taken similar, have similar bylaws, and in fact, including 15 on the Cape, all of Nantucket and Martha's Vineyard. And the bylaw on which ours is based is endorsed by the Massachusetts Sierra Club. So you can see here who has the municipal ban, who has the retail ban, and which communities have both. We would be a leader on the South Shore, but our committee, we're very happy that people from surrounding communities have reached out to us, saying that they're interested in doing similar action. Perhaps not, you know, not at this town meeting, because it takes some time, but like, we wouldn't, we wouldn't forever be alone on an island doing this. So the next slide, please. This is our most popular question, why water bottles? And there are a few answers to it. I do want to start by saying, part of this bylaw is about chipping away behavior and making small manageable changes. We are not of the mindset that just because something isn't a full solution, that it's not worthwhile. So we do feel that this is about something that could be attainable, and that will begin to get people to change their behaviors. So if we go to the next slide, we can see that the world has a plastics problem. This is from the United Nations, you know, and it shows the plastic since 1950, and that's been produced since 1950. That small, small green area represents what's believed to have been properly recycled. So it's a miniscule amount compared to what the plastic that has been produced in this world. The most common for plastic is for it to be discarded, often ending up in a landfill, incinerated, or in land and sea. If we go to the next slide. So our committee, one of our charges is to earn recycling dividend points for the town by carrying out different educational activities and supporting the DPW. So when this town began this conversation about plastics with this bag ban, that earned us one RDP point. So that's money that can be reinvested into our recycling program. In order to earn those same funds, they have now made the standards more stringent, so we now, instead of one point, two points, but we need to pass a bylaw that restricts two items, and the items And the items are, that are eligible are there in yellow, or greenish-yellow, whatever that is. So if you go to the next slide, please, we looked from that list, we looked at what our options were. We had already, so this chart shows you the reported lifetimes of different plastic products. Bags were already banned, so looking at that, we were between, if we wanted to look for the most bang for our buck, we were between plastic bottles and Styrofoam cups. So we decided to go with plastic, plastic bottles because we thought they were more common. And then if we go to the next slide, and we also believe that alternatives are readily available. So there is no doubt that the best alternative is a reusable bottle that you can refill. And to that end, we've worked with the Weir River Water System, and they've agreed to donate two reusable bottle filling stations. We're hopeful with a new sustainability coordinator consultant that we could get grants for many, many more. Looking at the communities where these bylaws have been successful, it goes hand-in-hand with a map and easy access to water everywhere in the town. So hoping, so anything that we can do to support that would be really helpful. But this also shows that there are other alternatives. There's canned water, there's water in aluminum containers, boxed water. They all come with their pros and cons, but they do exist. If we go to the next. So I think for the environmental arguments, there are two main points. The first one being that I believe we have a responsibility as a coastal community to guard our seashore, and the most plastic will end up in the ocean, and a main point of entry is coast. So as a coastal community, I think we should take that seriously. The second argument has to do with our town's voted upon net zero goals. Continuing to promote and plastic, either on the municipal side or on the commercial side, is not in line with our town's carbon emission goals. If you go to slide 13, I believe, no, next, oh, sorry, just go back one. Just as an, go back one, please. Just as an example of the seashore, this was all, this comes from TrashPaddler.com. This is all debris that was found in Hingham Harbor in, I believe, the capture, I believe it's 2021. So you can see that, like, this is happening, even if you think you drive around our town and it looks very beautiful, that's actually what is happening just offshore. And then to the next slide, in terms of our emissions goals and the phrase "plastic is the new coal." In 2019, global production disposal and incineration of plastic emitted 815 million metric tons of greenhouse gases, which is the equivalent of 190 medium coal-sized plants. If we continue on our current trajectory, plastic alone will be 15% of our global carbon budget. So those are scary numbers, but it's, and when you think of water bottles, it's not necessarily very much, but it is a step that we can take, and I feel that we have to take. So the next thing, argument I want to make, if we go up to slide 17, sorry, just go ahead. Yep, so, just back one, sorry. So I think there's been a, for equity and environmental justice arguments, I think there's been a big movement in our town to consider issues of equity and justice. So plastic recycling centers are disproportionately located in low-income and BIPOC communities, and they will have negative effects on these communities. If you go to the next slide. If we look at where Hingham's plastic goes, if you assume that it's properly recycled and it went through the transfer station, it's going to be taken by our vendor and aggregated at various points in Massachusetts, and it's then going to be sent for processing to various sites in Pennsylvania, Georgia, or South Carolina. So looking at this presentation, we can see how Hingham compares to those communities. They're all significantly larger in terms of people of color, and significantly lower in terms of medium household income and education, and higher in terms of percentage living in poverty. So I think it begs the question for our community, how, what, we're sending our waste for a convenience product to be processed in places where it's known that the illness is associated with living and working near these plastic facilities are asthma, respiratory illnesses, cancer, and reproductive illnesses. If you go to the next slide, if the plastic is waste, because it's largely, most plastic is not properly recycled, then it will go to Cavanta Seemass in Wareham, Massachusetts, which is considered an environmental waste community, which also has much higher population of people of color, much lower median income, lower levels of education, and higher percentages of people living in poverty. So I don't see, I think taking action on plastics is in line with our, with our social justice goals. So going forward, the economic impact, we talked to 20 businesses in town, so if you advance, oh, sorry, so this is the, what we are currently paying to dispose of our plastic. It is much cheaper than to recycle it and then to dispose of it as waste, but there is a cost associated with it. And then the next slide is, in terms of, we went to 20 businesses in town, 17 of them answered, and asked them a simple three-question survey. So the first is, what, if any, variations of single-use water of less than one gallon do you sell? And they are selling some of it, but the, but mostly it's plastic bottles. So this showed us that there are alternatives available, and we would hope that they would pursue those alternatives instead of relying on the plastic bottles. For the next question we asked them, assuming this ban is passed, do you think the impact will be, what do you think the impact will be on your business? And so, I mean, some of them are not there yet, but there were, it was about, it's a little less than half who said it would be no change or partially recruit revenue from alternatives. We did speak to businesses in some communities that have the ban, who have said that it was an adjustment, but they were able, they were able to source alternatives. COVID was a little questionable, and that most people have understood, at least on a personal level, even if not for their business, that it was the right thing to do, and that it was a change, but it was a change that had to be made. And then the next slide, with all the negative impacts on our environment that is, that are caused by plastic, are you in favor of this proposed bylaw? So you can see the green is that they fully support, blue, not inclined, but in short, not sure but inclined to support, and then a little less than half do not support or not sure or not inclined to support. So, I mean, considering that we're proposing putting a bit, a restriction on businesses, I think this was actually kind of heartening that, you know, they recognize that this is an action that is coming and that needs to happen. So with that, I would love questions.
Great. Well, Maria, I remember, I think you and I started talking about this probably last July, maybe July, late July, early August, so you're cleaner and greener, and this has come a long way. So thanks for all your effort you put into it. I know there's been a lot of enthusiasm around this, around this article. I want to note on the record, we've received numerous emails specifically on this topic. Because of the sheer volume of them, we can't respond to everybody, so our apologies upfront for not getting back to people. We did receive quite a bit of correspondence on this from the community, and that was noted. They're all read, and we appreciate everybody's input who emailed us. Let me turn to Liz first, see if you have any questions or comments.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Maria, for the presentation, and it's obvious the committee has done a lot of work and a very thorough job. As Bill said, we did receive many emails, I think I counted 62, in support. And, you know, what those people were mentioning, what is that we do need to address this plastic pollution and curb the use of single-use plastics, which I agree with. Some of the questions and concerns that I had when first kind of learning about this was one of equity, kind of that flip side of the equity you were talking about, but thinking about if we take away the inexpensive, convenient option of water, which is the healthiest option, what does that mean? So thank you for, you know, talking about the alternatives. I think there does need to be an education campaign that goes along with this, just alerting people to what's happening, encourage the use of reusable bottles. I know you mentioned Weir River Water System. I have spoken with the water superintendent, Russ Tierney. He certainly is involved and committed to, to getting the water fill stations around town so that, and in the schools too. So I know that's something that we're working on. Obviously, the schools and REC will be impacted. I did reach out to a school committee member to see kind of what the comfort level was there. I believe they're piloting it at Plymouth River, so be curious to see how that goes, but it seems like it's good feedback so far. And then, go ahead.
I did also reach out to two REC centers that have the ban in effect, and they both said, one was Brewster, one was Arlington, so very large, large population relative to Hingham, and a smaller one. And they both said that it's gone fine, that people in the community accept it. The expectation is that you'd bring your own water bottle, they have cups and larger jugs, you know, for road races is a little bit more. For their summer programs, they're, the kids bring a bottle, and, but they are able to source other types of water from BJ's, you know. But in both communities, they said that it's gone well.
Okay, okay, that's good to know, thank you. And then obviously, the businesses, I was concerned with what the reaction would be. I worked with the Hingham Downtown Association when the plastic bag ban came about, and I think with proper notice and education, the businesses quickly got on board and have done well with that. So it is, it is, you know, just kind of a, they need the time to adjust. I know, you know, with that, they had plastic bags already in stock, so we kind of let them go through what they had and then gave them time to order the paper bags. So, you know, that kind of process, I think, needs to happen. So I do feel that, you know, my, my concerns and questions have been answered. To your earlier point, this will not solve the entire issue. It is a small step, but I think it's, it's in the right direction, it's progress. I think we'll need to see more at the legislative level and at the supplier level, frankly. This puts a lot of the onus on municipalities to figure this out, which is not realistic to solve this climate change problem all on our own. But we do have our own net zero goals, and I think this is very much aligned with that. So, so I, I feel comfortable with it, but certainly want to hear what you, you all think.
Great. Joe, any questions or comments?
Well, thank you for the work, thanks for the committee. They've really put in a lot of work. I mean, my experience has been that doing the right thing is not necessarily easy, it's not necessarily painless, it's not necessarily costless, but this is, addressing plastics in our environment is something that has to be done. So I really appreciate the effort and the thought that's gone into this. I did have a couple of questions. Have there been communities that have tried this and then reversed their decision? And if so, why did they reverse it and what can we learn?
So, yes, there have been a couple of communities on the Cape that passed the bylaw and then reversed it, but it's kind of a, unintentionally kind of a trick question. In those communities, the bylaw didn't actually go into effect, it was paused because of COVID, and then came up for a vote at a, at a subsequent town meeting before it could actually go into effect. So I think in that case, they weren't able to do the education that they would have liked to have done, because the bylaw was basically, it passed and then was never given a chance to be in effect. So, I mean, I would hope when we have kind of a long runway, if this is passed at a town meeting, it wouldn't go into effect until January, and I think it would be on us to do a fair amount of, of education, and hopefully to get, you know, have plans for as many hydration stations as we can, so that we don't find ourselves in a similar situation.
What, what were those communities? Do you know?
Off, Imashpee, Eastham, and I don't remember the rest of them offhand, but I can certainly find out for you.
Great. I mean, your last comment goes to my next question, which is, communication is key here, and what efforts should the town be taking, and not just your committee, I mean, this is broader than that, to make sure that this is a success?
Well, so, actually, if we could go back to some of your presentation, I wanted to talk about, so we did do, I did have a slide on our socialization efforts so far. And I would say that one thing we do need to, one question that has come up that I feel is above my pay grade, is what is the larger plan for plastics in our community? What, you know, what, what are we doing? Sorry, if you could go ahead to, almost at the end. Yes, next one. So, you know, what, what is the plan? Are we gonna, we're gonna do this, and then what's the next step? Is there going to be better at the DPW, is there going to be tetrapack recycling for people who choose to buy boxed water? And so those are questions that I feel, I, I don't feel qualified to answer, right? Like, it's, that, that is a greater, a greater question, and a, but I think a good one. So helping to, helping to craft an overall plan of where we are going in terms of our plastic consumption would be really helpful. And also helping to build the infrastructure, so there are grants available for hydration stations, there are grants available for refillable bottles, although I don't think having a refillable bottle is usually the problem for people, I think it's having a place to refill it. And even offering support to businesses, because through the DPW, we can put hydration stations on town land, but if there were a way to, because they're not cheap, right? If there were a way to have businesses be, private businesses be able to offer this to, to residents in town, I think that would go a long way.
So you're dovetailing with what we just discussed, which is the naming bylaw. We can have a naming for the, the hydration stations.
So I don't want to say, but fill in the blank hydration station, I'm, I'm on board.
What has, what have been your discussions with the schools, and not limited to the schools, that others that sponsor sporting events, where sometimes water bottles are handed out to athletes? What impact would this have, if any? Because I noticed that, at least as I see what's being proposed, there's a restriction on sale. I did not see a restriction on distribution.
Right. So we, so we need to, that would fall under the education piece, because most of the water bottles that are being distributed to sports teams are coming from boosters, they're coming from parents. They would not really be under this bylaw. We would hope through education, they would choose to make a different choice, but within this bylaw, I cannot stop a booster parent going to BJ's and Braintree, buying a bottle of water, bringing it to the team, and passing out water bottles. That's just not, and, and because, and part of that is because this bylaw does not limit behavior, like, no one's going to be stopped for walking around town with a water bottle, because that would be completely unenforceable. There's absolutely no way that we could do that. So, so in terms of the sports community, it would be more on just trying to use education to change, to change the behavior. I mean, if this bylaw is successful, and we have had some conversations with people of our communities, and it spreads, like, it's going to be harder and harder, it would become harder and harder to get this product, and that would nurture behavior more, but for right now, that, that wouldn't actually be affected. In terms of the town distributing water bottles to student athletes, they would have, they would fall under this, so they would have to, just like the REC, you know, switch to an e-group container and paper cups, or to a different type of packaging.
I'm sorry, how does the, how would distribution run afoul of what's being proposed here?
So, so distribution is on the, in the municipal ban, in the municipal ban, the town cannot distribute plastic water bottles.
Is that part of this?
Article DD.
Yeah.
That's the next one.
Oh, sorry, that's the next one.
Okay, that's not, that's not part of this?
Okay, no, no. Yeah, so distribution does not run afoul of this one.
Okay. You know, as I opened up saying, it's, doing the right thing doesn't mean it's the easy way or the costless way, but it's clearly the right way. So, so thank you. Okay, no other questions?
Just two points. You mentioned hydration stations, which we're thrilled to be having, having those come online. We have plans for two hydration stations to start with, but we've been talking with Ross to Liz's point, and we hope that the two, to start will mean more in the future. So we'd like to have a community full of those if we can, just, you have to tie them to a water source that's metered to Weir River, but hopefully have those up running in the spring or summer for people. Just one last point, Joe kind of brought it up. So one of our biggest athletic events is July 4th road race, sponsored by the REC Department. So I, I'm assuming under this article, they would have to switch to the, the paint, the cardboard water to give that out?
Or jugs with cups.
Or jugs with cups, okay. Is, is a card, is that cardboard, is that, can you recycle that?
Not at our transfer station.
So, but you can do it, it can be recyclable, we just don't have the capability to do it here. Okay. And it's because, because it's the...
It has a, usually it has a film, so it's, it's different types of materials.
Yeah. Okay, all right. Okay, let's, go ahead.
Well, I was gonna say, like, what they do in, what they do in Arlington is they have, they have volunteers at tables with cups set up, and at the end, they just have, they have jugs with cups as well, and, and people are supposed to bring their own water bottle, and as you said, it's not always easier or painless, but it's the, kind of the question of, well, we haven't had water bottles forever and people have been running road races for a long time, so, you know, what, what do you do? And actually, the rec I spoke to did mention a cost savings of not, of having the jugs they fill with town water as opposed to buying plastic water bottles.
Great, thank you. And again, thank you for all your hard work and, you did a great job. I know we have, anticipated a lot of people want to speak on this article tonight, so what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna recognize the people in person first, and then we'll go to Zoom, so, Mr. Air, come on up, if you could just come up the podium, I'm gonna ask you to state your name and address off the record.
Andy Air, 41 Hemlock Road. So, what I was calling to talk about, I know I sent you the article, Bill and Liz and everything from Concord, and on principle, I am for these articles, but I also feel that they're not the right time to do it. And part of it also too is I feel there's not enough socialization going on. If you could bring up the slide of the, the groups that they've already talked to?
Sure.
Those are not all the groups you've talked to, those are the groups that agreed to endorse.
Support it. So my biggest concern is, you know, I said, you know, I said to Maria when I first came here, is that none of the sports leagues have been talked to yet, they're, they're going to be the biggest impacters of this, this ban, right? And to get buy-in from them. A lot of those groups also have members, or a couple of those groups, a little cross contamination going on there. The other thing is that, could you bring the slide up for the towns?
Which one that might be?
Back.
Four.
Okay, so if, we noticed the retail ban, the majority of all the towns are located on the Cape or on the islands, right? We only have a couple that, we have Concord, we have Lincoln, which is right next door to Concord, and Sunbury, and Rockport, is, Tisbury is north, right?
It's the Cape.
Yeah, Cape, right, so. Most people know that Rockport's a little tiny place, you know, it's easy to ban there. Lincoln is right next to Concord, that's kind of a good neighbor thing for them, but in regards to the article, in regards to Concord, it was, the biggest concern was at that retail level. Folks going to other communities and bringing it back in, you know, I, I know myself, I don't, generally don't like using plastic bottled water bottles, but today's economic climate, aluminum is higher priced, plastic's a cheaper alternative, right? My recommendation basically would be a municipal ban, not necess, not necessarily a bylaw, but just basically a roadmap of what we're gonna do as municipality, looks, sounds like we're doing the correct things, and we got filling stations, are we doing the filling stations at the, the fields?
Plan is for one here, at Town Hall, right, right behind the rec center, and I think the other one is going to be?
Downtown.
Downtown area, yeah.
So, basically, to get, to basically get these groups that are actually supporting to help us in regards to financing those, those filling stations, you know, that'd be a good thing. My other question is too, what is the economic impact at the municipal level and across all departments when plastic bottles is eliminated? Will that have any bottom line repercussions or any, in regards to budgeting? You know? So, in regards to both, we have Arlington, you know, and the other, the other four on the Cape. So, the Cape, the Cape for the last, you know, 20 years has been doing an initiative, because it's, the Cape is actually considered all coastal, you know, it had major environmental concerns, and they've been working on this past 20 years and everything, and I think from Hingham, taking that first step, that would be, we wouldn't be making any dent, really, because basically, you know, I could go to GoHasset to get water bottles, you know, I could go to Weymouth and get water bottles, you know, I can just go to the next town over and get water bottles, and then, you know, folks, folks in our town, well, we won't go to Whole Foods, you know, we won't go to Stop and Shop, we'll just go to Stop and Shop across the line and get it. And like I said, I am for the plastic bottle ban, I, I hate plastic, you know, but the reality is, it's, it's just not the right time. I think we're better as a community to go to municipal level, change the behavior, and then look down the line, maybe two years down the line, talk about possibly a retail ban, as more and more communities get on board.
Andy, thank you very much.
All right.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak to this article? Come on up, just take your name and address for the record, if you don't mind.
It's Rebecca Sharp, and it's 35 High Street in Hingham. I guess that goes without being said. I want to preface this by saying I hate public speaking.
A little louder.
Just a little louder if you can, it's okay.
Talking to that guy.
Oh, to that guy. So, I think something that I'm not hearing addressed at all, that to me is the most, first of all, I, I think the overall concept of eliminating plastic, obviously, it's logical, I'm not even gonna begin to argue that point about plastic, but I think the issue I take, or I know the issue I take with is specifically water. And it has to do with the idea of going into a place of business and, I'm not sure this speaks exactly to this Warren article or the one that's coming up, but either way, just the overall subject. The idea of going into a place of business and not being able to choose water as my choice beverage unless I've left home with that beverage, that just doesn't sit right with me, it doesn't sit right with, I'm bringing up a young, a young son in this town, and to have his only options be carbonated something, or a soda, or a juice, and you could argue, well, there is canned water and there is glass water, I don't necessarily want my young son walking around with glass, and canned water, once it's opened, he's not throwing that in his backpack, so you're creating waste right there, he's gonna maybe take a few sips and then discard it. The idea of him not being able to choose water, like, it's a necessity to live, it's just, I think we're starting all, I think the overall concept is great, I think the way we're going about it is not the right way. There was a mention of there being a big plan, why don't we create an overall big plan for plastic? Possibly not water, which is something that we need to live with, and attack it from, from that perspective. Taking that a step further, especially people who come from out of town, who don't know this, they might not leave their home with a water bottle. My parents are, you know, in their 70s, and let's say they came to, they happened to live in the town, but let's say they came to visit and they wanted to stop and get bottled water less than a gallon, they wouldn't be able to unless, again, it was carbonated or in another packaging form, which not all places, it's not that is readily available, and the same concerns glass and it, the container not being able to close. So that's, so many things, so back to the rec department, or starting with the rec department thing, if you have a young child that's arrived without a water bottle, are you, are we just providing paper products and then are we recycling the paper? What is the expense of the town for providing paper at that point? If you're at a restaurant, for example, Square Cafe, and you want to get water, and you're on the outside patio, they typically try to not bring glass out into the outside patio area, they're putting it into a plastic glass, you know, then you're using a plastic cup, a plastic straw, a plastic lid, and the ice, you know, which obviously has an impact on the environment, the delivering of the ice, the making of the ice, you know, so on and so forth. The filling stations you mentioned, you know, who's picking up the cost of that? You mentioned it was going to be metered to the Weir River, is it metered so every time you use the water station, you're paying for the water you're withdrawing from it? Or is it every time it's drawn down, the taxpayers are paying that? Like, I'm not sure about that metered element you mentioned, Mr. Ramsey. So overall, we have two watering stations, we've got over 20,000 people that live in this town, and we're talking about two watering stations. And I'm assuming if this was to go into effect, we would have the elimination of water potentially next January. Outdoor water stations, are they insulated? Are, is there gonna be somebody who oversees the cleanliness of them? I think there's just so much that I like the overall concept of eliminating plastic, but I think a big picture has to, it needs, we're rushing it, in my opinion. And then I know on one of the slides you mentioned there, to get the two-point credit, there were a few different items. Not that you asked, but my opinion, why don't we start with Styrofoam and go to takeout restaurants throughout town? And they'll ban all takeout restaurants from offering Styrofoam as a takeout option. I don't know what the exact impact would be, but that would be a better place to start, in my opinion, the same with straws, why don't we make a townwide ban on plastic straws? Start with plastic straws and Styrofoam. I believe Dunkin' Donuts has gotten rid of all of their Styrofoam, but any coffee place that does Styrofoam, pick two other items, but starting with water, and just, yeah, I know I keep repeating myself and I apologize. And, yeah, back to the water thing, again, if you found yourself out and you had a baby's bottle that you wanted to make, you know, make up a formula bottle, you know, again, carbonated water doesn't work, and usually you don't use tap water when you're making up a baby bottle, and sometimes you can do your best job planning, but a baby needs a bottle all of a sudden out of nowhere, and again, it'd be like, well, you need to go to Weymouth, you need to go, I mean, it just, start with plastic, but don't start with plastic water, start somewhere else, I guess, is kind of my thought, so, take it for what it's worth.
Rebecca, thank you very much.
Yeah, no, thank you for your time, and I appreciate you listening to my concerns, I'm sure I'll have more.
Thank you. Feel free to speak up. Tony, come on up.
I am Anthony George, 15 Blaisdell Road, and I am part of the Cleaner, Greener Committee. I was one of the, two of us that went around and spoke to most of the businesses in town, the businesses that sell water, I mean, there's a lot of businesses, but we, we focused on the, the retail stores that sold water, and actually, we found some that would surprise you. The gas stations, a couple of the gas stations have their little convenience stores. And I was, I was, I wanted, I want to share with you the, the impressions I came away with after visiting, I think Janice and I pretty much covered all the 19 or 20, I did about half of them, I did the south end of town. And I was pleasantly surprised that, I found that the business owners, they understood where we were coming from. The, the understanding that we have a plastics problem is pretty well accepted. And I, I think the business owners were just reluctant to say, oh, I'm, I'm totally for it, I can forego the revenue. They're not able to say that, and we understand that. But I was very pleasantly surprised that, for the most part, they supported the, you know, if the time had come, I think they would get behind it. My honest impression after talking to most of them was they, they would get behind it because they understand it's the right thing to do. Fresh Market was an interesting perspective, the Fresh Market down at the shipyard. I ran into the manager of the store, and at the same time, he had a manager from Connecticut. And they knew exactly where I was coming from, they encountered it down in Connect, I think it was Darien, Connecticut, and he said that at first it was a difficult thing for the store to, to take down the inventory, but they've since found it to be something that they were able to, you know, keep moving along, and the community was pretty much moving along without, without, without issue, but, and the Fresh Market manager said, you know, we'd, we'd go along with it, we don't like losing the revenue, but we understand, and we'll go along with it. The article in the Globe today was an interesting one over in, was it Lincoln, where the market owner said after, I think it's a year or two years in effect, and he said it's, it's not an issue anymore. At first, I was against it, I didn't like losing the revenue, but now, it's not an issue. There wasn't any other further details, but basically, not an issue. I think the important thing to keep in mind is that there are not only, water is readily available right at our taps, right in our homes, and we're doing a great job of providing clean water, good drinking water, but secondly, there are alternatives, and I think that's the biggest, one of the biggest selling points to getting rid of the single-use plastic that we're throwing away, we're tossing, it's ending up in the ocean, it's ending up in landfills, it's, it's, we all, we all can agree it's a problem with these single-use plastic water bottles. There are alternatives, and it's just, what we believe and what we've found is, it's just a matter of education, of, of changing our habits. We lived without plastic water, I grew up without plastic water bottles, and, and we feel strongly that it's, time is now to get back to that and live without plastic water bottles.
Tony, thank you very much.
Oh, by the way, also, I have the, I have the answer to Joe's question. Dennis, Mashpee, and Sandwich were the three towns on the Cape that rescinded. The Sandwich town manager added, and this is in the Globe's article today, that they, they felt it was unfair that the different towns on the Cape had different restrictions, and so they felt that they would, it would make more sense to look to the state to take action on it, and that's why Sandwich decided to back off.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tony, appreciate it. Anybody else in the room want to offer public comment? All right, let me turn to Zoom, all right? Elliot, I think I saw your hand go up first, Elliot, so we're gonna unmute you.
Kate was before me.
Oh, okay, we'll go to Kate then. Kate, good evening, you can just state your name and address for the record.
Yes, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
My name's Kate Bolland, I'm at 338 Main Street, and Elliot, thank you for being so gracious. When this article was coming up, I just got on the phone and started to do some homework, just so I knew what I felt about it. I looked at things like communication, what was the cost and implementation, what was the access for people in the public to get water, and what were some unintended consequences? So I called five communities, excuse me, but two I concentrated on. One was Concord. Joe gave reference to what you're saying, Concord did face two times where they were trying to rescind it, however, they found it was one of the biggest funding to rescind it was from the bottlers, and it was defeated both times, and Concord has been very successful with this. The other thing that Concord did, which I thought was interesting, is they, they met with DPW, and DPW was really grateful they came to them, because they looked at locations within their town, so that they, because they do have a lot of tourists where people would be able to access, so they have used CPC funding and are putting in 10, are in the process of continuing 10 new locations. The other thing that struck me as I went to Arlington, I went to Arlington because they're a very large population of 46,000 plus. I spoke to their town, one of their town meeting members, and she said it went through with no issues practically, I think their vote was, I should know this off the top of my head, something like 199 to 54. She said there was very little conversation, and then she sent me to their health board, which was another concern of mine. I spoke, spoke to one of the women who was the compliance person for, within their health board, she said they've had conversations with planning because they only really meet with locations that might serve food, and she said they used, what they called it was, with the compliance officer said complaint-based, they've only had two incidences, it went through in May, and they gave a go until November 1st, and she said the two incidences were two small locations that somebody had called on, and they said, oh, gosh, we didn't know that I went through, thanks for letting us know. So they said they have had no issues since then. One of the unintended consequences that I heard was that what can happen from opponents is creating a distrust in the local water resources. I know we just spent a lot of effort to comply our water companies, so I thought that was interesting. And then I also spoke to Martha's Vineyard, and those articles that went through, interesting enough, were done by students, and they were the ones that were passed, so it was the younger population that brought those articles forward successfully. So those were just a couple of things that I thought were interesting, and that's why I'm supporting it.
Kate, thank you very much, appreciate that, that insight. All right, Elliot, you're up.
One quick thing, did I say they use CPC funding?
Yes.
You did, yes, you did mention that.
Okay, good, thank you.
Yeah, Elliot Place, 91 Kimball Beach Road, I got three points. One is that this proposed bylaw to ban the sale of single-use this, uh, proposed bylaw to ban the sale of single-use plastic water bottles under a gallon is in line with the town goal of reaching carbon net zero by 2040, both in the embodied carbon footprint of producing the plastic and in the, you know, degradation of the plastic gets thrown around. You can see right in front of me here, a bottle I picked up while hiking, and it was just thrown right along the trail and it happens all the time, everywhere. And also in the, um, so-called, uh, you know, dealing with the waste of the plastic, which many people hope is being recycled, but is not, okay? A lot of these single-use plastic bottles are not recycled. They are put into, you know, a conveyor belt and discarded into the trash. And a lot of that is burnt and put into, uh, landfills, you know? So anyway, that's one take. The other second stick point is that, yes, this is a baby step. And Liz pointed it out. We cannot do this alone. And this is just a tiny little step. But we are going to have to take many, many of these steps to change our way of life to reach carbon net zero. It is a hu, it's a sea change. And we need to start with baby steps. This is one. Okay, the third point is that, um, if we go back twenty to thirty years ago, nobody bought water. You didn't buy water in little bottles like this. It was diluted, you know, you had it through your faucet and the water that we receive through our faucet still today is perfectly healthy. And there are other ways of providing water in, you know, just like Gatorade, five-gallon jugs at sporting events, you know? And then, uh, there are many other ways to do this. And yes, we may need to relearn that, but this is a step in the right direction. Thanks.
Elliot, thank you. Would anybody else, uh, like to offer any sort of public comment? Um, or have any questions on this proposed warrant article? And if you're on Zoom, you could just either raise your hand virtually or just kind of wave at me and I'll call on you? All right. I don't see anyone else. All right. Um, so let me just turn back to my colleagues. Um, do you want more time on this? You want to vote tonight, Joe?
Well, I, I think, um, I've heard some really interesting questions and comments. Um, I mean, one of the things that I heard, um, that I would, I'd, I'd like to hear more perhaps from, from the committee on is the unintended consequence of making less healthy alternatives more available, namely carbonated versus water. And so will the result of this policy change be someone does walk into a store and what's readily available in the size that they want is the less healthy option? Uh, and we would want them to get the water and they can't. So is, you know, I, I heard that and, you know, that's a concern. And I'd like to, like to know what your position is on that.
So, um, so two things. One, we would love the town to put in more hydration stations so that that is an option, of course. Two, um, we are in no way, shape, or form going after water. What we are going after is the, the small plastic packaging. Um, there are lots of other alternatives. There are aluminum cans that open and reclose again, so you can use them again. There are bottles, like, i- if you look at, I think it was side five or something, they have them that you can open and close because they know what can, once it's open, it's open. Um, glass, glass is not a great alternative for a safety, but also from an environmental perspective because it's so heavy in terms of the shipping. Um, the paper, I would love to see, I think the paper options, there is a local business that offers. I would love to see that come up if we could, um, be more, uh, available, if we could recycle it easily at the transfer station. Um, so in eliminating this product, there are alternatives available, whether businesses are going to choose to, I mean, I can't, I can't mandate that a business has to carry that alternative, but I can say that they do exist. Um, and then I do think there are things that on the town side we can do to make it easier, um, for businesses to provide, um, to provide, you know, to provide that option and to make it a good environmental option. Does that answer your question?
It does. But, I mean, you began by saying you're not going after water, but you are going after the delivery of water in this particular way. And so, and that, that's, that's what we're hearing. Um, and, um, i- in a, at a time when we are looking to encourage folks to go away from carbonated and going to water, are we making that more healthy option less available?
So when I looked at, um, pricing of different alternatives, um, like from a retail, like for the consumer's perspective, um, there was a range, but you could get options in non-plastic bottles that were similarly priced. Um, and I think the other, from our perspective, there are some communities that have banned soft drinks. They didn't do it first off the bat. They went down the path, they started with water and then they moved toward the soft drinks. I can't offer as easily an alternative, um, to, you can't offer as easily an alternative, um, if someone wants to buy a soda. Like, they can't open their top and get a soda. They can't provide, uh, I mean, I guess we could provide soda, soda stations around town, but I don't think that's what we're going to do. Uh, I don't think that's what we're, we're gonna do. So I don't, I don't have an option to that. Um, the other part of that too is that I feel, you know, our committee's charge is, um, in, to a certain extent, like, we, is, is like to go after these recycling dividend program points. And the state has guided us toward water bottles for better or for worse. So, you know, we didn't come up with this in a vacuum. We're following a set, we're putting forth a bylaw that has been approved by the Attorney General, that we know will be approved by the Attorney General, and that had a, kind of has the blessing and guidance of the state. Um, and hopefully, you know, by showing support for that bylaw, that, you know, as more communities passes, that will push the state, um, to more decisive action and making it more even playing field across the state. Um, I'm not gonna say that, you know, soda is better, or that I would prefer people going to a store and buy soda. What I would prefer is that they have the option to get water, um, and that retailers would make the, the choice to offer different products.
Yeah. I mean, I think the dilemma we face is being an early adapter, if you will, in terms of moving forward. And, um, ultimately, what you're looking for is to create the demand for these alternatives and remove the demand for the, for the plastic water bottle. Um, and that, um, when you start out as one of the lead communities doing it, you're, it, the demand's not there. And you're trying to create it. You hope that other communities join you. Um, and, um, it's one of the challenges of being a leader. And, um, and I understand the concern, but, you know, it's, it's important that those who have voiced their concerns know it's been heard, um, because it's, it's an important consideration. Thanks.
Liz, anything else?
Can I just ask a question? Um, Concord, I think enacted the bylaw ten years ago. Is that right?
Uh, yes.
Okay. So, and I don't think there's overwhelming data that more people drink soda or have bad health issues.
No.
Right? Okay.
So they've adapted.
So I wouldn't say we're exactly a leader.
No, no.
Around here, we are.
On the South Shore.
On the South Shore.
Yeah. In our, in our world of the South Shore, yes, we are a leader, you know, globally or even in other areas, and other, looking to other areas of Massachusetts, specifically along the coast, I would not call us a leader.
Andy, you have another question or comment? You can run, yep. The way people at home can hear you.
Say my name again.
If you, if you remember.
Everybody knows. You did, you did say it earlier.
So, um, so just kind of give it a history because Clean and Greener, when I was on it during the bylaw, the previous bylaw, one of the things we did for the businesses, and I think it's really important here, we're kind of going back to the economics about this, is that we gave them what the difference in cost is moving from plastic to paper and what the financial impact was going to be for them. And there's a significant cost increase between plastic, aluminum, and box paper and everything. And I know about the other box paper from the, um, the vendor next door that does the boxed, and they sell them at two fifty a bottle, which is kind of expensive for a tiny box, right? So you're gonna have that increased economics and stuff. So that's gonna be useful if you're gonna try to sell that to the retail.
Andy, thank you.
Yep.
All right. Um, are you, do you want to move on this article tonight, or you want to wait till next week?
I'm ready, but.
Joe?
Yeah. I mean, I, um, it's, it's, it's a sensitive issue, but it's an important one that I think the, the town needs to, to move on.
Yes. And I do appreciate the concerns and the feedback. And I had several of them myself. Um, so I think, you know, that the education and communication is, is on us and certainly we need to, to move forward with that, um, as part of this. But I'm comfortable voting.
And I do appreciate the concerns articulated tonight as well. Uh, I think for me, um, the, the goal of getting rid of, um, of creating less plastic is a good one. And I do spend a lot of time in the summer in one of the communities that has implemented this ban. And I do think that in only the first year or two having it, there were some growing pains to residents adjusting to it and businesses adjusting to it, but ultimately, it's, less gone on. And it, and it's, it's, it's good to go to that, that landfill and see less plastic bottles there. Um, and I think the community has really embraced it. Um, so, with that, I would take a motion.
I move to recommend favorable action on Article U.
Second.
All of the favor, Joe?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
And I'm as well, the motion carries. That next brings us to Article DD. Uh, you kind of covered this, Maria, in your presentation. Is there anything else specifically you'd like to add on this article?
Uh, no, I don't think so.
Okay. You covered it enough in your presentation?
I think so, unless there, I'm happy to take questions, but.
Yep. Thank you. Joe, any questions on, uh, Article DD?
I just want, so it says it shall be unlawful for the town to procure, sell, or distribute non-carbonated, unflavored drinking water in single-use plastic bottles of less than one gallon. So I guess the, um, I get the procure and the sell, um, the distribution. Um, so if, if, uh, sports supporters come with plastic water bottles, um, can they be distributed at the event, at the sporting event?
Not by the town. By parents, sure. By boosters, yes. Um, but not by a town entity. So not by the coaches, not by, not by the coaches, not by the rec.
So they'll be have to careful, they'll be careful as to who's handling the water bottles.
Can I just jump in there? You said, you mentioned the coaches. A lot of the coaches, the Hingham Youth Little League and the like, those are private organizations and on town entities.
Yeah, I was thinking about, yeah, sorry, I was thinking about.
The high school.
Right, the high school, right.
The school teams, sure.
Right, schools, yeah, but private, um, private citizens, no. And again, complaint-based enforcement. I mean, the purpose of these bylaws is to try to nudge behavior. Um, it's not meant to be a gotcha or neighbors informing on each other or something, you know? So, uh, it is more to, to nudge behavior.
So it would be s- school sports teams and then any leagues through the rec, like Hingham Youth Soccer, is that?
No, it's, the, the.
That would be separate.
Hingham Youth Soccer's a private organization.
Okay.
Hingham Youth Basketball, Hingham Youth Baseball.
So like kickers, which, what's through the rec, though?
The, the rec summer program, right? So the council is employed.
Isn't there soccer?
So I, Maria corrected my wrong, but the council is employed by the town, working at the rec department would not be able to distribute plastic water bottles.
Right.
But Hingham Youth So, Hingham Youth Soccer, holding event on the field behind us over there, those coaches giving out water bottles would be allowed, I think, is what Maria's saying.
Yeah, because they're not town employees.
Correct.
Okay.
Um, so I, I'm actually more, more concerned about this article than the prior one. Um, it just, it's, just from the conversation we've had, that's, it's not terribly easy to understand who's gonna know what to do and when. Um, particular, I mean, I, I think the town buying and the, and the town, you know, um, uh, engaging in certain activities. But when you're talking about, um, particularly the sporting events and, and the distribution, it's, um, it's sounding like form over substance. Um, and, um, I, I just hate for the town to be taking a position that's, um, ultimately going to be impractical. Um, at the same time, we need to move forward with, with dealing with, with the plastic water bottle issue. Um, so I, I don't have an answer. Um, it just strikes me as not quite ready for primetime. Um, but I'd, I'd like to hear even how, if others, you know, ha, share that, share that concern.
Liz, what do you think?
Um, I, I think as long as we're clear, it's who's a municipal employee and, and who, you know, who this applies to. I think as a town, we want to encourage it to apply to everyone. Um, and certainly, you know, students and, and our youth, I mean, they have, they carry around water bottles. So.
Right.
That, I think, is more in their, part of their culture. Um, but I do think, again, back to the communication and education campaign that needs to go along with this, we just have to be really clear about who, encouraging everyone, but then making sure our employees know that this applies very specifically to them.
I mean, Bill, you, you're more involved with the youth sports. What's your, what's your expectation?
Well, the youth sports are involved with the private organizations. So youth football, basketball, baseball, private organizations. So them, you know, they'd be encouraged not to give up plastic water bottles. I think that'd be the culture we're trying to create. But obviously, um, based on Maria's comments, they could if necessary. Um, also, I can tell you, my children and all of the kids I coach tend to bring their own water bottles to, um, to the games and practices. They, they recycle, you know? My, my children have those large Gatorade ones.
Yep.
They have metal ones that they bring. So they're already doing it. Um, so it's, I see a lot less of those plastic bottles, um, on the basketball courts, on the baseball dimes, on the football.
Yeah. I mean, I think, to me, one of the most important reasons to move forward with this is the message that it sends. Um, and, uh, I, you know, sort of the implementation, I think, may be, um, sloppy, uh, at least initially. Um, but I, I think creating the culture is, is ultimately what's important. Yep.
I also, if I could say, another benefit to this is appear, is avoiding any appearance of hypocrisy.
Yeah.
And saying, you know, that there's one rule for businesses, but that we, as the town employees and entities, it doesn't apply to us. Um, I think if we are gonna move forward with, with restrictions on the retail side, the town has to be living those restrictions themselves and, and be an example.
Right. I, I do, I agree. I think this sets an example from the municipal, um, just from the, the town and the town leadership. If we're trying to get everybody to get on board, we certainly have to do it and model the behavior.
I'd be curious to, Tom, um, Maria mentioned, you know, it would be kind of enforceable through complaints. Um, it's a municipal bylaw, so who enforces that? Is it, would it be the water superintendent?
It says town administrator.
It says.
Put it this way, I know who doesn't. I know most likely it would fall to the health department.
Would it be Health or would it be Russ?
With the stores.
Would not be Russ.
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
Health department to enforce it at the store level where the sales are made. Um, for this one would be far more difficult to enforce. Um, you know, I'm trying very hard not to say the police department because that's who's, people would naturally call.
The police department does enforce.
And I'm willing to bet that our police department would not want to do that.
I'm not gonna send warnings.
Yeah, well, I mean, it's already a warning, you know, initially. So, well, we, we'll, I guess that will be worked out, um, as we move along. Okay.
Yeah. You want to come with me with the chief?
In the meantime, send the complaints to Tom. Okay?
That is, in fact, what's, what's in here, that, that the town administrator is responsible for the, uh, for the enforcement.
But he would delegate. He'll delegate.
Yeah, no, we'll, yeah, we'll find the right team.
Yep.
Kate has a question.
All right. Uh, hold on, Kate, let me just see if anybody else in the room has a question. Tina, come on up.
I don't really have a question.
Question, uh, gotta come up to the podium and name and address, even though we know you're Tina Sherwood, our advisory committee.
Tina Sherwood, 16 Partridge Drive. I just wanted Maria to note that, um, first responders are exempt from this as town employees. I thought that was an important point to me.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
So yes, in an emergency situation, it's called out specifically.
Anyone else in the room have any question or comments on this, on Article DD? All right, Kate, you still have a, a comment? We lost you there.
Um, I was just gonna say, um, somebody just mentioned it, Maria, with, I think it's hard to ask the citizens to apply this to their lifestyle and not to the municipality. I think it would look very uneven. Also, an example is someone from another town had contacted me and said, like, they had a Martin Luther King Day event, which was an hour and a half, and they had out six-ounce bottles for thirty-five people. And basically, instead of just having a pitcher and some cups, if someone happened to get thirsty in an hour and a half, they now had to get rid of all of those bottles because they had to put them out, people had touched them, and, you know, they weren't using. them out, people had touched them, and, you know, they weren't usable. So, all those kind of things, as well as people that work in the south, um, you know, on, you know, all sorts of crews or something like that. They just bring huge pitchers, just like the high school sports teams do. Those big, you know, Gatorade, I don't know what you call them, tanks, and then everybody just fills their bottle if they need to.
Kate, thank you. Anyone else have any questions or comments? All right, seeing none. Um, are you comfortable moving forward with this? Do you want to take a time?
I am, no, no. I, I think, uh, I'm comfortable. I think the, the enforcement is going to be, um, interesting at, at the beginning. Um, and I, and I understand that if the town is gonna take the view that sales cannot happen, then we cannot participate in that. It's just, uh, the, the distinction of, um, if you're playing on a town team versus not, not a town team, all of a sudden, that's the difference between the bottles, and that's, um, that, that can be confusing. Um, but, uh, again, I think we do need to start. So I'm prepared.
Liz?
I'm prepared.
Okay. With that, I take a motion.
I'll make a motion to recommend favorable action on Article DD.
Second.
All those in favor, Liz?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
I would as well, the motion carries. Maria, thanks very much.
Thank you, Maria.
Thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda is Propose Article X, which is the senior center feasibility article. We do have, uh, Tom Carey with us, but I don't have Tom Carey. Come up. Tom, you want to come up? We have our, the chair of our senior center of building committee, Tom Carey, with us. Tom, good evening. You're welcome to join us at the table, here if you prefer. Always a pleasure to have you up here with us, Tom, so thank you. Uh, but Tom Mayo is gonna take the, take the lead on this one, so go ahead.
Sure. Um, so the intent of this, of this article is to, is a reaction to some of what we've heard from the senior community, um, in that, uh, many, many have voiced an opinion that the senior center expansion, rebuild, however you want to frame it, is not necessarily most appropriate here at Town Hall. Some, many people have expressed that they feel that way, others have expressed they don't. So the intent of this article is to take the five hundred twenty-five thousand dollar appropriation from twenty-twenty's town meeting and re, uh, and rethink how that money's used. Right now, that, that money was, that amount was selected so that we would be able to get through to the construction of the, of the, of the project. What we would be doing is backing off of that goal, and that's where Tom's, um, Tom's committee would come into play, would be backing off that goal, and we would look for, um, feasibility and preliminary design concepts, um, initially only, and then free some of this, this money up to contemplate other locations for other appro, for, for an appropriate place to place a senior center, uh, perhaps to the extent of a feasibility design as well. Um, so what's unknown is how, how many locations are gonna be requested, how we would go, you know, how far we would go with that, um, I, you know, how we're gonna determine which, which location gets funded through preliminary design or not. Uh, but I think we can figure that out if we, if we free the five hundred twenty-five thousand dollars up to come up with a, a goal of identifying appropriate other locations for preliminary design concept.
Tom, thank you. Uh, Tom, you like to add anything to that?
No, I under, I understand the, the purpose. I'm in favor of it. I, I can tell you that the building committee has not been limiting its work solely to specific places in this building. We've been primarily focused on developing a program. What are the needs of going forward? And we intentionally have been doing that, albeit without any authority, because my experience in these projects over the years, um, led me to believe that what the town really wanted from this committee, when it came back after the feasibility, was an answer of whether this space would be appropriate and feasible. There was good reasons why we put it here in the first place, and they may not have gone away. But at the same time, that the committee would report to the town what limitations might exist with respect to these spaces, which rendered them either inappropriate, unfeasible, or less desirable than some other alternative. So the goal of casting a net widely to determine what's in the best interest of seniors in the town of Hingham in the future is one that I wholeheartedly support. We do all know, you probably better than most, that these things cost money. And, and I can say from my own experience that if you start from scratch saying, "Let's find a good place for a building, and let's think about what the building will look like, and let's figure out how we can build it," you're talking a long period of time, not, not only in municipal, even in private. And I do have some concern, and the, the goals may not be utterly contradictory. The senior center right now, five thousand square feet, is utterly inadequate. I think that we have complete agreement by everybody on that. Would be better if you had ten or fifteen for the next decade, rather than the same measly five. And maybe that can be done at a price which is very good for everybody. So there are a number of options for the town to address the needs. This article does not exclude the fact that my committee will continue its work. And frankly, I wouldn't want to go to town meeting and say, "We're building a fifty million dollar senior center at X," without being able to say, "And there are good reasons why we don't want to do it where it is now, even though that could be done for significantly less money." So we answer the question, what's feasible here? And, and we will look at what the other options are that are available to the town. And, and my committee doesn't make those decisions. We will offer reports and recommendations, and if there's still a need for a building committee, and I'm still involved with it, we will do whatever we are instructed to do when it comes to the actual construction of a building.
I, I would just add to that. The good news is the, the appropriation that was, um, that was set forth in twenty-twenty is still fully available, uh, ne, fully available. We spent a little bit of money on a report to help inform some of the decisions we're making. Um, but almost five hundred-plus thousand dollars of that five twenty-five is still available. As you know, we were sitting on that until we knew what we were gonna do with the public safety facility. There was no sense designing something for the senior center here if we weren't gonna move the police department out. So we've, I think, appropriately held off on spending any of that money. It's all still here, and now we have the resources to make the decisions. We need to, to move forward.
Great, thank you.
So to be, I'm sorry, to be clear, this is not an article asking for new money. This is opening up the door to spend the existing appropriation in a little bit different way.
Right.
Yes.
And, uh, Tom Carey, you and your committee are doing great work, and very much appreciate. I, I know you, you meet regularly. You've been meeting regularly for, for years, and , um, ton of effort, time been put into what you're doing, and very much appreciate what you and all your committee members have been doing for the senior community.
Thank you. It's a hard-working group.
Definitely.
Um, so I, I am, I am in support of, of this article. Um, some, some residents have said they love the idea of staying here, Town Hall, and some residents said, "Hey, we'd like to look at some other options." So I think it's good to look at other options. Obviously, we have the goal in mind that we want to, uh, build the best senior center, um, that we can, given, given our budget, and, uh, we want this to come out right. So I think it's good to look at, uh, different locations. We don't have a lot of them in town. Um, but as Tom said, to cast a wider net, to get us the best senior center available for the senior community is definitely our goal. So I'm fully in favor of doing this and, um, looking forward to supporting it at Town Meeting. So Liz, any comments or questions?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Tom, for all of your work. Um, and I certainly agree with the approach to start with the programmatic needs. I think that's critical, to figure out what, what the seniors want and need and what we want to provide, and the building it kind of goes around that. Um, I raised this concern when we talked about this before. My only concern is about the timing. I don't want this to, um, to slow down the process more than it needs to. Um, certainly, we want to get this done as, as quickly as possible. So, but we want it to be right. So I think there's, we just have to strike that balance. Um, so I do support using, um, the money, 'cause I've, I have also heard feedback that people aren't convinced that it should be here. I think it's, we're hearing mixed, mixed things. So, um, if we can use this money wisely and efficiently, um, in terms of timing to figure out the best location, then I, I do support that.
Thank you. Joe?
Yep, I, I agree. I mean, this proposed article simply amends a prior article that was approved at Town Meeting. Um, no new funds, uh, and allows us to cast a wider net. Um, I think we do not want to incur undue delay, uh, and I'm sure the committee will make sure that there is no undue delay. But, uh, I'm absolutely in favor of this.
Hearing the words "no new funding involved" is always gonna make me happy.
I wanted to be very clear.
Especially, especially this year.
So that is, that's important, yeah.
Yep.
All right. Any members of the public have any questions or comments on Propose Article X? Gene, come on up. You might come up to the podium, Gene, and just.
I want to.
Good to see you, Gene. That way, the people at home can hear you. Just gonna ask you to state your name and address, but we know who you are, Gene.
Jean Salirio, Sixth Autumn Circle. I want to say, I've been on the building committee with, um, Tom for all these years, and it's gone back and forth between, do we take what is left from the police department, or do we get something that, even if it's a building that can be leveled and then raised to what we've gone now. Sally O'Hair, uh, on, on our committee has devised a spreadsheet that shows the programmatic things we actually need. And that is something we should, we should go forth. And I support Tom and whatever he's saying. Thank you, and I support you guys.
Thank you.
Thanks, Gene, thank you. Anyone else have any questions or comments on this proposed Warren article? All right, seeing none. I would entertain a motion.
I move to recommend favorable action on Article X.
Second.
All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
I would as well, the motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Our next item on the agenda i, is appointments. I don't believe we have any appointments this evening, do we?
Nope.
That will take us to public comment. Do any members of the public have any public comment this evening? If you have a public, if you want to engage in public comment, just raise your hand or wave at me, and I'll call on you.
Thank you.
All right, seeing none. We would next turn to Town Administrator Select Board Reports, and let's start with arts this evening.
Nothing to add this evening, thank you.
Tom? Nothing tonight, thank you.
All right, Joe?
Just, uh, commending the Historical Society for a very successful Lincoln Day event, um, and it was very educational, good turnout. Thanks.
Agreed. Liz?
Nothing to report, thank you.
I have, I, I have three items, actually. Um, I, I wasn't here last week, I was away for, for military service. But prior to that, the Thursday prior to me going away, I, I attended, uh, my first all-town chorus concert, and it was just absolutely wonderful. You know, everybody, every, every choral group in town, um, from, um, the elementary schools to the middle schools to the high schools, all sing a song, uh, and then they end with all singing one together. And it, it just, it shows you just how tremendously talented, um, our arts program students are. And it was just, it was just a great event. Really enjoyed going there, and I congratulate all the students for the great work they did. Also, I want to point out that, uh, on Saturday, the, the Barker League, our youth basketball program came, um, season came to an end, and, um, my team unfortunately did not win the finals, but it's okay. We had a great season and got an opportunity to coach some, some great kids in town. And, um, the, the amount of volunteer hours that go into that program, uh, between Pat Riley, who runs the, the Barker League for the entire town, all of the coaches, all of the parents, it's just, it was just another wonderful season. So my appreciation for that. And lastly, um, Liz and I, um, attended the Hingham High School, um, basketball game. It was senior night there, and it was great. All the seniors were honored on the basketball team and also on the dance team. But Hingham's own Liam McBride, uh, actually scored his one thousand points, and then he actually went, went beyond that, um, in that game. And that, he is the third H, Hingham High School athlete to do that. Um, but it was a great moment, and it was great to see that. And I was thinking after the game, um, about how many points he had to average per game, per season, and it is, it is a phenomenal, phenomenal feat that he accomplished. And, uh, certainly, he was the one shooting the ball, but he had, you know, such great teammates along the way, too. So my congratulations to Liam McBride and his entire family. The next two items, I'm gonna read them into the record, but, um, then I'll, I'll make a motion. Uh, item ten involves, uh, executive session under Mass General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one, eight-six, to discuss potential acquisition of real estate. Article eleven involves an executive session under Mass General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one, eight-six, to discuss potential acquisition of real estate easements for three-three-five Lincoln Street in Hingham, Massachusetts. And with that, I am going to, um, make a motion that the board will enter into executive session under Mass General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one, eight-six, to discuss potential acquisition of real estate, and two, under Mass General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one, eight-six, to discuss potential acquisition of real estate easements for three-three-five Lincoln Street, Hingham, Massachusetts. Because discussion in an open session may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the town, the board will not reconvene in open session this evening. Uh, with that, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
And I would as well, the motion carries. Everybody has a good evening.
Wait, we've got the second motion? Do we have to do that?
I think that's gonna be done.
Recording stopped.
I think that's an executive session vote.
Yep, okay, great.
Okay. Everybody have a good evening.
Thank you.
And we are meeting on Thursday, I think we're gonna meet on Thursday.
Thursday, yes.
Thursday.
Yes.
We'll see everybody on Thursday night.